I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under our God, indivisible, veritable, in just this struggle.
All right. Before we get into administrative business, any member of the public wishing to make public comment should complete a speaker card, yellow card in the back, and then bring it to staff at the front. On the card, please indicate the agenda item number on which you wish to comment or oral communications for items not on the agenda. Members may also participate in this meeting via Zoom or by phone. Once dialed in, and if we could put the call in on the screen, once dialed in, enter the conference number 811-5615-8241 and press the pound key. If you are called in during public comment opportunity, press star five to raise your hand. Once staff calls you, you can press star six to unmute yourself, or you can do the raise hand function in Zoom. If you are watching on Channel 26 or the live stream, please do mute your live stream so that we could hear you. And then I'm going to read this initial public advisement. So, "Public meetings are a limited forum, a limited public forum, meaning that there are rules for commenting at these meetings. Comments on non-agendized items must address matters within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city, and comments on agendized items must relate to that specific item. If comments do not fall into one of these categories, the city will provide you with a second warning to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city or on topic. If the warning is not followed, I, as the chair, will direct the city clerk to cut off the microphone, and throughout this warning system, I will seek the assistance of the Assistant City Attorney in identifying comments not related to the agenda item or not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission." So that will bring us to our agenda. So, I don't see any public comments on administrative business. Do we have any raised hands for administrative business on the phone?
There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay, then I will open and close the public comment for administrative business and ask for an approval on the order of the agenda. Oh, sorry, for a motion on the order of agenda. Commissioner Godwin?
I move, we approve the order. The agenda is written.
Fabulous. I will second that. Let's have a vote, please. May we get that to display on the voting board? Perfect. Okay. And then let's move Commissioner Devine's name to be in line with her yes.
Thank you.
Fantastic. No, we're good. We got it. We got it. Okay. And that will take us to approval of the minutes of November 3. I was not at that meeting, but I understand that I can vote on those. Okay. Does anyone have comments on the meeting minutes, or would anyone like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. We approve the minutes as written.
Second the motion? We'll vote on that, too.
Motion by Commissioner Redfield, seconded by Commissioner Devine. Motion passes unanimously.
Fantastic. Okay. We do have a designation of liaison tonight to the December 8 meeting for 570 Cresby Drive. Do we have any takers on the liaisonship? Yeah? Sure, I'd love to be liaison for that. Fabulous. So Commissioner Devine will serve as liaison, and I think we are set. Fabulous. Okay. So, moving right along to oral communications, I am going to reread our initial public advisement and before I take oral communications. So, "Public meetings are a limited public forum, meaning that there are rules for commenting at these meetings. Comments on non-agendized items must address matters within the subject jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, and comments on agendized items must relate to that specific item. If comments do not fall into one of these categories, the city will provide you with a second warning to stay within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission or on topic. If the warning is not followed, I will direct the city clerk to cut off the microphone, and throughout this warning system, I will seek the assistance of the Assistant City Attorney in identifying comments not related to the agenda item or not within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city." Okay. So, oral communications is a time for folks to comment on items that are not on the agenda. The time allowed for each speaker is three minutes. I do not currently have any speaker cards. Are there any raised hands on Zoom?
There are no raised hands at this time.
Okay. So, no oral communications tonight. And that will bring us to consent items. So, there's only one item on the consent calendar. Unless staff has something to say, which I don't think we typically do on consent items, I will take a motion, or if someone wants to pull something from the consent calendar, feel free to let me know.
I make a motion. We approve the consent calendar.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, let's vote on the consent calendar.
Madam Chair, before we vote, did you take public comment on the consent item?
No, I did not. Thank you very much. I also do not have any public comments on the consent calendar. Do we have raised hands on Zoom on item one, report on the zoning administrator use permit?
We have one raised hand. Oh. Clifford Lawrence, you may unmute yourself and begin your comment.
Cliff, do you have a comment on the use permit for the massage establishment?
No, I'm sorry.
I had a feeling. That's okay. We'll come back to you for the public hearing. Are there any other raised hands?
There are no additional raised hands.
Okay. So with that, I will close public comment. Ms. Bazano, we had a motion, and I believe we have a second. May I take a vote, or do I need to re?
No, I assume those motions still stand. Maker and second confirm, but yes, we can proceed with the vote.
I see head nods, so let's vote, please.
Motion made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Redfield. Motion passes unanimously.
All right. Moving right along, we have a continued public hearing to rezone under RZ 21122 from R1 and CR with HPD overlay to PD slash HPD, including approval of a development plan, DP 8722, and specific plan, SP 18022, to allow for single-family residential use and reclassification of the HPD overlay to permit land disturbance consistent with the municipal code. Is there a staff report?
Thank you, Chair Hauser. We have James Lynn, Senior Planner, presenting for staff tonight.
Okay.
Good evening, Chair Hauser and members of the Commission. My name is James Lynn, Senior Planner with the Planning Division of the Community Development Department. The project before you this evening is an application for a rezone from R1 Single Family Residential and CR Commercial Recreation with HPD Hillside Preservation District Overlay to PD Plan Development with the HPD Overlay. A development plan to establish single-family residential uses, a specific plan to allow for a retroactive grading permit at 650 Cape Breton. The subject site is located at the end of Cape Breton Drive within the Park Pacifica neighborhood. The current zoning designation of the subject site, which is comprised of two parcels, are R-1 Single Family Residential and CR Commercial Recreation. The general plan land use designation for both parcels are open space agricultural and residential OSAR. The project is seeking Planning Commission approval of this specific plan and recommendation to the City Council to approve a rezoning and development plan, which are classified as the planning entitlements. The applicant is seeking these entitlements in order to comply, in order to apply for a retroactive grading activity that had occurred that was part of the notice of violation that was issued on May 20, 2021. The Hillside Preservation District requires the reclassification of the Hillside Preservation District through the plan development process before land disturbances can occur. The rezoning to PD Plan Development will require a development plan in order to define allowable uses and a specific plan, which would provide the technical, the design details necessary in order to implement a development plan. For this project, the proposed development plan includes the identification of establishing the single-family residential use. Any use not specified or listed in the development plan as a permitted or approved use would require an amendment of the development plan, which is a discretionary permit process requiring Planning Commission recommendation and City Council approval. The application would also require a specific plan for the approval of the retroactive grading permit for the relocation of the arena, sand, and soil. Identified on plans in Attachment D also is the proposal of the installation of a prefabricated carport in order to meet the parking requirements where two off-street covered spaces shall be provided for single-family detached dwelling units. As mentioned, the applicant has identified a few options of similar dimensions and type as a prevention in case by the time of the application approval, one of the options were to be discontinued or sold out. And apologies, let me pull up the... So, the carport that I was mentioning just now, the options for the carport are shown here on this slide. And to continue, aside from the proposed installation of the prefabricated carport through the application of a building permit, the project does not involve any new construction or demolition of existing structures. As part of the directions provided by the Planning Commission on August 4, 2025, when the meeting was continued, the Commission asked staff to provide responses to several questions at the next hearing. And the first question identified on the PowerPoint slide were, "Are any easements in place on the site for public access to trails?" Based on staff's review, there are no... The San Mateo County Property Information Portal indicates that there are no public access easements exist for the subject property. However, there are three storm drain easements on the site. The next question is, "Potential alternative actions or permit pathways to obtain a retroactive grading permit and comply with the order without going through a rezone, development plan, and a specific plan." Based on staff's review, there are no alternative pathways to resolve the outstanding grading violation or to obtain a retroactive grading permit. The city's regulations outline a specific process that must be followed before grading can legally occur on this property. Because both parcels are located within the Hillside Preservation District, any development proposal must follow the full plan development process. The city also initiated a code enforcement action after grading was conducted inside the cover arena without a required grading permit as part of this application process. And as part of the corrective actions, the applicant is required to obtain these permits. Grading within the Hillside Preservation District is only allowed when it is a part of the approved specific plan. And at this time, there is no previously approved specific plan or development plan for the property. Because of that, staff cannot issue a grading permit under current conditions. To move forward, the applicant must first submit a specific plan for Planning Commission consideration. In order for that plan to be approved, it must be tied to an approved development plan. The work associated with the grading also qualifies as a development proposal, which triggers the full plan development process. For properties within the Hillside Preservation District, this process includes reclassifying the parcels into a planned development district, establishing a development plan, and then approving a specific plan that becomes a part of the zoning for the site. So in summary, before a grading permit can be issued, the applicant must complete the full plan development and specific plan approval process, and under the city's current regulations, there is no streamlined or alternative options available. Another question that was mentioned in the last Plank Commission hearing were that if any, there are still temporary storm water measures in place. And the site visit conducted by the NGO engineers following the August 4, 2025 Planning Commission hearing confirms that the photos taken during the visit depicting the current site conditions as provided on the site plan. And on November 17, 2025, City of Pacifica staff conducted a site walkthrough with NGO engineers to verify that these temporary measures are still in place. The next question that was asked by the Commission was to provide a list of past projects that received approval from Planning Commission for rezoning to Plan Development, PD. And for this, staff has searched for approvals dating back to 2018. And in case that is hard to read, I will read the two applications that had similar approvals. The first one is for TBD Talbot, which was a rezone, Hillside Preservation District reclassification, development plan, specific plan, variance, and parking accession for the construction of a single-family residence with a two-car garage on a 24,149 square foot parcel. And the next application was 801 Faster Avenue, which was also a rezone with the Hillside Preservation District reclassification, development plan, specific plan, and transfer development rights subdivision tree permits for the construction of a 24-unit residential condominium project. And it is worth noting that the development proposal for these applications were for the development projects such as the single-family residence or a condominium project, whereas the development proposal triggered under this application and considered is the grading activity that has already occurred and is part of the corrective action for the applicant and the installation of the prefabricated carport in order to meet the city's residential parking standards. And what I also provided on the next slide is an example of the development plan for the TBD Talbot project, which was a single-family residential project. And I see now it's a bit hard to see, but so to describe what was circled in red at the top is the use and the approved uses for the TBD Talbot project, which is for a single-family residence as well as ADU use and JAD use as part of the approved uses. And for the table on the left, which is the application currently under consideration for 650 Cape Breton Drive, includes uses for single-family residential use as well as ADU, engineer ADU languages on the development plan ordinance proposal. And just to reiterate that, any use not specified or listed in the development plan as approved use would require an amendment to the development plan, which is a discretionary permit process requiring Planning Commission recommendation and City Council approval. And for reasons analyzed in the staff report, staff recommends that the Planning Commission find the project exempt from California Environmental Quality Act, recommend City Council approve rezone RZ-211-22 and the development plan DP-87-22, and approve specific plan SP-180-22 by adopting the resolution included as Attachment A to the staff report, including conditions of approval in Exhibit B, and incorporate all maps and testimonies into the record by reference. And that concludes staff's presentations. Joining me this evening and available for questions are the City Engineer and Deputy Director Roland Eup, as well as the applicant team, who are in attendance this evening with a presentation slide deck of their own. Thank you.
Does anyone have questions for staff before we turn it to the applicant team?
If I may, Chair. On the, in all the paperwork, in the presentation, it states that this is a one, single-family residence on the property. Google Earth clearly shows two, what I believe are residential buildings.
Yes, Commissioner Redfield. So, the development plan proposes for single-family use as an allowable use and does not specify the density or number of permitted units. The application would allow for the continued single-family residential uses of the site. And if approved, any uses of the existing buildings and structures on site not related to single-family residential use, or those typically associated with single-family use, would be prohibited.
Follow-up questions? When the property was sold, I know there are certain requirements in the Muni Code as far as sewer inspection, things of that nature. As far as I understand, those buildings were not occupied prior to that, to the sale. Has there been any building inspection? Do we know those currently meet code, building code, as far as electrical plumbing, et cetera, et cetera?
Thank you, Commissioner Redfield. That has not been part of the planning entitlement, but would have to come as part of building Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I had a question. Did you consider encouraging the applicant to apply for a conditional use permit that would enable the retroactive grading permit? Because that would align better with the neighborhood's kind of goals of not changing the zoning, since it was to be for a single time on a single site?
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. So, as the current existing conditions for this site, there are no approved development plan or specific plan, and any sort of development proposal in which, in this case, the grading activity is considered as a development proposal would have to follow through and adhere to the guidance that's listed in the development plan and specific plan. But because there are no existing development plan and specific plan for this site, an application for one would have to be applied for, in this case, for any sort of activities to occur. So, for a use permit, essentially a baseline would need to be set for this property.
So, you're telling me a conditional use permit option is really not available?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Godwin. Could you please repeat your question?
Sure. So, you're telling me that the option of getting a conditional use permit is really not available for this property at this time?
That's correct, Commissioner Godwin. So, at least at this time, there is no option for the applicant to apply for a conditional use permit. As mentioned earlier, the development plan lists approved uses, and so in this instance, if the applicant were to apply for anything that's not listed as an approved use on that development plan, they would have to apply for a amendment to the development plan. Similarly, if there is a conditional uses listed on that development plan, and the applicant is looking to apply for a use that's listed as a conditional use, then in that instance, they would go through the conditional use process, which would still be a planning discretionary permitting process back to the Planning Commission.
Okay. Had one other question. There was some discussion in the community about the applicant never completing the information requested in April of 2024 for development plan and specific plan. Have those in fact been completed as of this time?
Commissioner Godwin, I might need you to be more specific about the question. I'm not sure, quite sure what is outstanding.
On April 8, former Planning Director Murdock sent a letter to the owner of the property stating that the information he requested was incomplete. And was that information ever supplied to the city between that date and this date?
Yes, Commissioner Godwin. So, the application went, during that process, it went through the completeness review process, and ultimately, the application was deemed complete by a project planner. And so, those outstanding questions would have been resolved per the review process for completeness.
Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
Yes, I have a clarifying question to Commissioner Godwin's question, which was also one of mine around the conditional use permit. And let's see if I understand it, because some of this situation makes my mind feel like spaghetti. It's kind of the lizard eating its tail. So, if I understood correctly, conditional use permit at this time is not an option because it's not a use that's listed in the development plan or the specific plan, and yet we haven't approved those yet, or recommended approval of those yet. And this is all being done retroactively, so if we look back in time to when the grading was actually done, would a conditional use permit have been an option then?
Thank you for your question, Commissioner Davis. So, no, because as mentioned earlier, there are no existing development plan and specific plan for this property. So, any sort of development proposal that goes on for this site would have to adhere by the said development plan. If no development plan or specific plan are available, then as part of the application process, the applicant would apply for a new development plan and specific plan. And in that situation, they would apply with scope of work that would help with the insight of the development plan that they're applying for.
Commissioner Davis, a question for you.
Okay.
I think that the questions that you're asking and that this commissioner is asking are really good questions. I think that with them comes like a really good opportunity to deliberate.
Okay.
And I'm wondering if you want to reserve them for after public comment so that we could have a whole list of conversation?
Yes, I think that's a great idea. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other clarifying? Okay. And I will start with you after a public comment. I would love to. Okay. So with that, I am going to move to the applicant, but before I do, we had a ton of public comment, both at the last meeting via email and to the commissioners as the attachment to the staff report that came out. I only have four comment cards. I just want to ask if folks that plan to speak can fill out a comment card, or folks that plan to speak tonight can raise their hand. What I'd like to do is make sure we have time for everyone, make sure we have time for deliberation. And so, after the applicant's presentation, I'll gauge what we have, and then we'll go on timing from there. Okay? So, I believe the applicant has 10 minutes, or they can go however long they need and reserve the remainder of their time for rebuttal.
So, just to clarify, the applicant has 10 minutes, and then they can have three minutes for rebuttal?
Oh, I thought that they had to reserve their time for rebuttal.
That's what I'm asking for clarification.
Yes.
Are you saying they have to reserve a portion of the 10 minutes for rebuttal?
That's how we've typically done it, but I would defer to you. I'd actually ask you.
Well, the council changed their policy, and so they have 10 minutes for the applicant's presentation, and then the applicant just gets, applicant or appellant gets, three minutes for rebuttal. So, there's no reserving.
We'll follow the council's lead. So, just to make it clear for the record, we will have 10 minutes for the applicant, and then they can have up to three minutes for rebuttal after public comment.
James, do you have that clicker for me? Thank you so much. Thank you, guys. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, everyone, for your time this evening. My name is Sigrid Wagener. I'm with Manat Phelps &amp; Phillips. I'm a land use partner in our California practice, and I'm here on behalf of the property owner this evening. Just to kind of level set the table again, especially in light of the hearing in August where it seemed there was some confusion about what was and more importantly, what is not at issue here. You know, one of the commissioners, I believe, asked the question of us, why are we talking about a grading permit? This doesn't typically come in front of the commission. This is not commission business. This is a land use body that looks at and opines on large development projects. In order to kind of take a stab at why we're here, I'd like to take us back to what the facts were in 2021 and remind everybody what happened and where we are and why we're here today. You guys have the pictures in your packet. This was the movement of sand from a horse arena. And as an equestrian myself, it's about, you know, a standard dressage court. It's a covered arena. It's 20 by 60 roughly. That was the movement of sand from the interior of the arena to the exterior of the arena. There was no grading in what we understand that to be in the traditional sense. We are not in any way discussing or under any order of abatement relating to any movement of soil, hillside, or other types of excavation that you traditionally associate with grading. The property owner, when it was given this notice of violation for illegal grading, disputed that, heartily disputed that, pointed out that sand was moved. Unfortunately, the city's retained hearing officer disagreed, and ultimately, a final order was entered against the property owner for grading, although the order itself, if you guys look at it, page 102 of your packet, does in fact say the relocation of sand. But it's the final order, right? And that's the order of the city, and that is what the property owner is burdened with. And I also want to make that point very clear. And I also want to make that point very clear. This order is against the property, and it burdens the property. And over the past four years, the property owner has, in good faith, ticked all of the boxes in this order to correct that violation. This is the final box-ticking exercise, coming to you to get a grading permit because of the unfortunate designations of the property. Again, there's been a lot of talk about rezoned development plan, specific plan. What does that allow us to do? All it allows us to do is get our grading permit for sand that has already been removed and has been fully remediated, and we are also getting a building permit for a carport because we need a second carport. This is the city code. We don't particularly like the box we're in. It doesn't sound like the commission really likes the box we're in. But this is the way the code has been written, and because we are unfortunately in this district and have this overlay, we are going through what is quite a bit of a formalistic exercise to get a specific plan and development plan that literally lets us have a grading permit. If there was another pathway, we would certainly have availed ourselves of it. You know, we didn't want to be here to ask you guys to give us a grading permit for work that we've already done. But again, we are burdened with this order. We need to get it off the property. We've done everything but get this grading permit. Staff's already said all this, and so I don't want to be terribly redundant. But I think it's important, again, to level set the room and level set what everybody understands is being asked for tonight from you in terms of a recommendation to the council. While we are doing is legalizing, regulating our existing grading that has been done, we are going to continue to utilize the structures for residential use that is unauthorized use. We are putting in a carport so that we now comply with the current parking standards in today's code in Pacifica. Staff already said this. I'm just requoting what they said, and I appreciate staff's time on all of this. We're not proposing any new development. James has said this several times. We're not constructing anything. We're putting up a prefab carport, and we're getting rid of our NOV. This doesn't allow us to do anything further. As staff has already pointed out, any sort of change in the future would be subject to an amendment of the plan that we're getting tonight to get a grading permit, hopefully from you. We don't get to just go out and build anything beyond clearing the NOV and the carport. That's it. If we were to come back to you, as you know, land use works in a very, very linear way. If we were to come back to you to ask to do anything else outside of the limited authorization that's being proposed tonight, that would be an entirely new discretionary process. We would need to come back to you for full hearing, all administrative due process, all noticing requirements, full freight. That is not being sought tonight. Again, all we want to do is eliminate this violation. We have completed every step but obtaining this grading permit. We spent four years doing that, and that is all we are seeking tonight. And with that, I will reserve my three minutes at the very end of this.
Okay. I have one more yellow card. How many, if folks online could raise their hands?
We have one raised hand, but three people in the Zoom.
So I will allow for those three people to raise their hand over the course. I really thought we were going to reduce time tonight, but this is, we've got plenty. So everyone will be allocated three minutes. I will read the three names, like the first name and then the two people after, so that they can be prepared. We're going to start with Lisa Funkhauser, followed by Mark Hubbell, and then Kelly Maresco. Reminder again that these people have three minutes.
My name is Lisa Funkhauser, and I appreciate you hearing my concerns today. When we were here in August, you heard, I voiced what my concerns were then. I'm not going to rehash that. I will address a little bit of what the applicant just said, which is their movement of sand from the arena. And as I said last time, that movement of sand, of course, has, it's contaminated. It's equestrian feces and other things in there. That runoff from that property got into my house because of illegal construction that they did because they didn't get what they wanted the first time they applied for zoning with the Planning Commission. When they didn't get what they wanted, they went ahead and did what they wanted anyway, and it caused me harm. When I asked them for reimbursement of the $27,000 that I had to pay to repair my home, they said, nope, not our problem. And they started harassing me. They were people there following me, yelling at me from the property. These are not good faith actors. I have no doubt that if you give them an inch on any of this, they are going to find a way around it. So yes, it was movement of sand, sand so that they could hold events in their arena. They had hundreds and hundreds of people there. They parked cars in the arena, which they weren't supposed to do. They were playing basketball. They had basketball tournaments with an amp where all we could hear was them yelling, you know, their play-by-plays of these basketball tournaments. Let me tell you, in an arena like that, that reverberates through the valley. This is illegal work. They have not proposed any new development. So how can any future changes that require, I just don't understand this chicken and egg thing. As you said, Commissioner Davis, it's the lizard chasing the tail, or whatever it is. It's that notion of there's supposed to be a development plan, a specific development plan, in order to get these changes or amendments, but yet they haven't created one. We don't know what they're planning. And that's what we want to know. We want to see, well, what is their intended use of this property? Yes, she just said, okay, they're planning to keep it residential. They just, they bought this property, and they had no intention of keeping it residential initially. And they even now have meetings regularly. Their church people come in, I'm presuming it's their church people, but they have these big meetings regularly, once or twice a week, where people are coming in. So they aren't using it just for residential purposes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, followed by Kelly Maresco, and then Lori, which I think is Lori Yapp.
Hello there. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm speaking tonight as a 40-year resident of the Back of the Valley neighborhoods. And my neighbors, when they saw this thing's whipping up again, are very concerned because the, when it was first, this thing was first going on, and it was more open and everything. You know, we got the, we were doing traffic testing and traffic counts and all this other thing. So there was going to be, you know, maybe 125 or 200 cars there for a Sunday, you know, if it does, if the church thing does apply, or as somebody just stated, you know, maybe it doesn't have to be built that way. But we're all very concerned about that much traffic going to one place in the Back of the Valley neighborhood that was never designed for that. And, you know, and on Sundays, when kids are out playing and everything, if there's, you know, 125 cars, you know, coming up the road, and I get that number from three years ago, when we had a lot of meetings between the church organization representatives in our neighborhood, and 125 cars, you know, per each way, right, was the number. Now, I'm starting to think that it could even be a lot more than that. So I just, you know, in this planning phase, I'd just like you to keep that in mind, that the neighbors really have, are very concerned about, that whole neighborhood, actually, the whole Back of Valley neighborhood, has huge concerns about the safety of this thing. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly, followed by Lori, and then Sue Degree, and that's the last card I have.
Hello, my name is Kelly Maresco. Born and raised in Pacifica. My parents live on Cape Breton, and I grew up at Park Pacifica Staples, riding horses and enjoying ranch life with my friends. The owners, Matt Farley and April Schneider, made this place a wonderful place for horse lovers, and it was like my second home. There are trails up to the mountains that were accessible by horseback and ranch vehicles. We do not know if these trails are being maintained, and they could be used for emergency. This organization has made changes to the property without proper permit or community outreach. They say they want a carport. Why? They have a covered arena, a large shop, which is like a large garage, two barns, all of which can accommodate parked vehicles. What is the plan for this property, the arena and the barns? Why are they applying for a carport when they do not have a permit for social gatherings? Who needs covered parking when they don't, are not zoned for gatherings? When they had a church gathering, the whole block was parked, cars, plus the whole property. Please listen to the people that actually live in this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Lori, and then Sue.
Hi, I'm Lori. The applicant performed illegal grading on the property in March of 2021. It is now, over four years later, and a convoluted proposal is being presented to you in order for the applicant to obtain a retroactive grading permit. The contaminated soil was already removed from the arena and placed in various locations on the property. The soil that was removed absolutely needs to be properly secured on the property, and should have already been done so after four years. Obtaining a retroactive grading permit cannot undo what has already been done. However, trying to find a way for the applicant to obtain a retroactive grading permit has led us to this convoluted proposal. So why don't we consider removing the retroactive grading permit requirement? Then, no zoning will be necessary, no carport, and no changes to the property. The proposal rewards the applicant for their illegal actions and undermines the public desire to keep the current zoning on the property. This would be an absolutely ridiculous outcome if this proposal is approved. The applicant needs to submit a complete application to the city disclosing their planned usage for the entirety of the property. Piecemeal applications like the one before you do not serve the public or the city because no one can get a true picture of the overall plan for the property and render a knowledgeable assessment if the overall project would be feasible or appropriate on the site. It is easy to get caught up in trying to understand this proposal and forget that future plans for this property have been in the works since it was purchased five years ago. Let's remember, the applicant already performed illegal grading, so obviously, they had a plan when they performed that grading. The applicant had applied for a temporary use permit to have services six days a week with up to 150 people, two times a day. So they had a plan. The applicant hired professionals to perform a traffic study. So they had a plan. The applicant has demonstrated that they have plans for the property. We shouldn't feel pressured into approving this proposal without knowing the full scope of the future plans for the property. I keep hearing that this proposal is just for this or just for that. But the issue is, we shouldn't be making major changes to the property zoning without any idea of what the future plan and usage will be on the site. Let's get a complete application with the planned usage for the entire site first. Approving this proposal, including rezoning, development plan, and specific plan, may lead to unforeseen consequences for the city and the public. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Lori. Sue, and then we will move on to folks online.
Thank you, Lori. Made some excellent points. So it wouldn't be the first time that the City of Pacifica had to say, sorry, you cannot do something that's retroactive. It's not the first time. It's happened before, where the property people didn't follow the rules, and they had to, you know, take it down, actually. So that wouldn't be unusual. The thing is, this is a cul-de-sac. They did say it was moving of sand. That sounds like simple, you know, why worry about that? But it is contaminated. Contaminated, when anything is contaminated, it has repercussions, and those kind of things should not be, you know, slipped over. Allowing retroactive sometimes like this, when an agency or a church, in this case, they've built places before in this, in other cities, but you have to, you have to be aware of what the rules and regulations are. That's just part of building and getting permits. So not being aware seems kind of suspect. And then the inch, give somebody an inch and they'll take a foot, opening pathways to even more ways of attempting to do things, shall we say the word manipulative, whatever. The basic point is, it wouldn't be the first time that Pacifica said, hey, you should have known, you should have known, and you're going to have to take it down. Sorry, but that's life. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving to the web, I think, I know we had Mr. Lawrence. Do we have any other raised hands?
There are no additional raised hands, but we could possibly.
Have more after?
Yeah.
We'll leave, limit it to the three people who are on, but let's have Mr. Lawrence speak.
Clifford Lawrence, you may unmute yourself and begin your public comment.
Good evening, and thank you, commissioners. Appreciate your service. This is a crock. This, this whole community is being held hostage by some illegal grading, which has become a dog whistle, and is totally obscuring what is the true intention here. And I'm hopeful that you can recognize that just by the performance that this owner has already demonstrated by doing illegal grading, doing illegal gatherings, and such, that their intentions don't match up with your expectations, and don't match up what you think they should be doing as good citizens of Pacifica. I am very concerned that a rezoning could open new opportunities we have not foreseen. I beg you, I beg you, please deny this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. Any other raised hands?
There are no additional raised hands.
All right. Well, then I will bring it back to the applicant for their three minutes, if they would like to take them.
Sure. Just again, to keep feeling we go around in circles on this one, to reset, what is in front of the commission is very limited in scope. And the way land use law works is, what is in front of the commission is all that we're going to be authorized to do. There's no larger development proposal here. If that were to come before the commission, that would be a full freight, separate discretionary process. It seems that folks are very concerned about what may happen in the future, but there is no proposal for the future, and there's no proposal for development. We are, again, burdened with the city's order and the city's directive to obtain this retroactive grading permit. That's, that's a city-imposed obligation for us to clear a violation that we do have a right to clear, and we have, in good faith, worked for four years to complete all clearance items. This is the last remaining item. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I will close public comment, and I will bring it back to the commission for questions and deliberation, which we can now do. I do want to ask staff for a couple of clarifiers to help direct our conversation. So I believe that we are not here to deliberate on the violation. Whether a violation took place or not is not the purview of the Planning Commission. Is that correct? That decision was already made?
That's correct. The administrative hearing officer heard the appeal and made the.
The administrative hearing officer heard the appeal and made the final determination and that order is in place.
Okay. And the order has a requirement for a retroactive grading permit. Is that correct?
I was just looking at it. The order requires that they comply with zoning ordinances to obtain a grading permit, I think is what it says exactly. It says, um, sorry, I was just looking at it. Oh, obtain a grading permit for the illegal grading relocation that occurred on the property as set forth in May, on, in the May 20, 2021 notice of violation. And that notice of violation specified the requirements regarding the reason, that the process they would need to follow to obtain a grading permit.
So the order requires a retroactive grading permit, but the order does not specify a retroactive rezoning or a rezoning. It just specifies that they have to go through and get a rez, a retroactive grading permit in accordance with our municipal code requirements.
Right. And then, keep in mind that the city then entered into an agreement that specified the process that would need to be followed as well for obtaining the retroactive grading.
An agreement with whom?
I'm sorry?
An agreement with whom?
The applicant.
With the applicant?
As part of the resolution of the code enforcement violations.
Commissioner Davis, let's go back to your questions.
Okay. Actually. Oh, city attorney, I'm sorry. So I'm looking at the court order and I know that there were, for both violations, those actions were listed as, and that, and they got into covering the disturbed soil and soil erosion, but I don't, I don't, I don't see where it's, and I'm not questioning what you're saying, but I'm not seeing where it specifies that they have to get a retroactive permit in the order.
So if you look on page.
Packet page maybe?
Packet page 102, I believe.
102, great, thanks.
And the hearing officer, Ms. Valerie Armento, specified in, if you look at the very bottom lines, starts at line 17 and goes to 20. So the applicant is required to refrain from any additional grading or removal of sand from the property and to obtain a grading permit for the illegal grading sand relocation that occurred on the property as set forth in the notice of violation.
Okay, so is that a part of the order that we could dismiss?
No. You don't have any jurisdiction over the order.
Okay, even though it was found in our favor, it, okay, all right. So retroactive grading permit is required.
So we, so we need a retroactive grading permit. And I'm going to cut to the chase with the CUP, because I didn't think about that, but I think we all talked as a commission at the last hearing, and I think what the, what we said, and folks can jump in to re-characterize their statements, but what I heard and what I said, was that a rezoning for this does not pass the logic test. So when I look at the findings that are required to do the rezoning, I have a hard time making them because the A to B to C logic is very convoluted. They don't seem to apply to a retroactive grading permit. So instead of sticking with the municipal code, section 22, right, Article 22, I looked at Article 34 for variances, and those are findings that I think we could make and wouldn't rezone the property and could get the applicant the retroactive grading permit that they need to achieve. So I, I defer to you, Marge, but I do, I see what you're doing with the CUPs. I was thinking the same way with variances.
Right.
But there's a.
Right. So that is, that's a great possibility, and that's what I started doing. Rather than continuing to look at a packet we'd already seen and review answers to questions that frankly, some of them weren't quite answers, I started looking at the ordinances. And I don't, I might be opening a can of worms here, but there's also, under the development procedures and standards for HPD, says, it does say that if, you know, in a HPD, in the HPD districts, shall pursue the procedures and standards set forth in PD and that it has to be rezoned, but it goes on to say, where land is both within the agricultural, and this is, I know it's the land use in the GP, in the general plan, but within the agriculture and hillside preservation zoning districts, applicants proposing a development which is either a conditional and/or permitted use within the agricultural district are exempt from the requirement to reclassify the property to the planned development district. However, all other requirements of the hillside preservation district shall remain applicable. So I wondered if that might be a possible path. So it sounds to me like we now have two paths, at least to explore. Maybe city council and staff aren't prepared to address that now, or city, I'm sorry, council. I made it sound like I was talking about the city attorney.
Denise. That's fine, just Denise.
What a kind way of reminding me what your name is.
Don't scare me.
I'm teasing you. Denise, yeah, you know, maybe you don't have these answers, but obviously, I think our minds are in the same place. So, and I kind of summed it up this way, and I don't know if this is helpful, but let's see if I, I kind of understand. So we, there was grading done without a permit, seemingly to use the arena for other purposes and eliminate the smell. City filed the notice of violation. We won an order. They were ordered to obtain a permit which requires a DP and SB to satisfy that so it can be rezoned PD to allow for grading for soil disturbance because it's HPD. Again, lizard eating the tail, kind of. I saw it said, we received an application. I was curious that we didn't have a copy of that application. I would have appreciated seeing it. I think it would have added understanding. DP and SB became the grading, the continued residential use and the carport. So then I go, were the last two components requirements of the city, did we add those so that it would really look like a development plan? I, I was confused by that, too. Maybe grading isn't considered standalone development. So, and under these circumstances, it has to be rezoned, right? So here we are back at the beginning. But, so then I say to myself, so let's look at the circumstances we can change and what is in our control to change as we try to find a way to avoid rezoning this property to PD, planned development, which we've had a lot of public outcry about it. We, as commissioners, are sitting here not being able to come to the findings that are necessary for that. And I think that we've got two other things we could explore now, and I think it would be worthwhile. In fact, I would like to request that we do that.
Well, and Commissioner Davis.
Too soon.
No, I, I, I think, you know, you and I sound like we've made our opinions known, and I would like to just quickly poll the commission to see if there are any commissioners who are supportive preliminarily of a rezone. So Commissioner Devine, I'll start with you.
I have two questions.
Yes.
And then I would like to provide an opinion. Is a covered, is an additional covered space required for their use?
Right, as part of the, of the requirements for the planned development and development plan, they need to have covered parking.
Previous, previous to this, though. Previous to this, was it required?
No.
Okay.
No. So they're just, they're providing that as a way to meet the requirements of this process.
Got it. And then what, this is more so for the public as well. What possibilities would a rezone to PD allow?
In this case, as indicated by staff and the applicant, all it will allow is the grading permit to be issued.
But it will allow them to come forward with plans of.
They could come forward with plans anytime. So all this is going to approve is the retroactive grading permit.
Understood.
Can I, oh, I'm sorry. Can I ask you your question?
No, no, it's okay.
All right.
It's okay.
So I understand that now, that's all we're, that's all it's approving, but there is a distinct difference between R1 and PD. And in fact, when I read about PD, it's about being more flexible. I know that's discretionary approvals, but even a, in a general definition that I found, a planned development district, I'm going to read this if that's okay, is a zoning tool, a zoning tool that allows for flexible mixed-use development. This is currently R1. By deviating from standard zoning rules like lot size, building height, and setbacks, it is a site-specific zoning framework for a unified project that includes specific development standards such as uses, density, and open space in exchange for community benefits like creative design, preservation of natural features, and enhanced public amenities. I have a hard time reconciling this with that, and I think everybody else is, too.
It's a pretty, pretty obvious divergence.
Yeah.
Way different than R1.
Going back to where everyone's feeling, how are you feeling?
Every zone is asinine. I will never support that.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions related to this. This retroactive grading permit was supposed to be obtained no later than May 30th, 2022. Is that still applicable in November of 2025, three and a half years later? Or do we have any flexibility, given this is kind of getting long in the tooth?
No, the order did specify, have a date certain.
It did.
And ultimately, the city and the applicant entered into an agreement to extend that deadline, and the applicant met the agreement requirements and filed the application within the timeframes of the agreement requirements and has, that application has been in process for a very long time. So that's.
So the, the deadline was met, even though it's.
Ultimately, the.
Long in the past.
Right. Ultimately, the deadline was met and it's just that the application has taken a while to be deemed complete and then processed for planning commission hearings. Yeah.
I would, I had some in Sungia this week and I was reading some, some law books about this.
Yeah.
And at least from a layman's point of view, it looked like if there was some environmental benefit, it was possible to apply the conditional use permit rules if there was an overriding environmental benefit or there was something else a community got out of it. Are you, are you 100% sure the conditional use permit is just totally out of the question?
I am.
Okay.
And I think staff is. And I mean, we've, we've looked, I've, I'm hearing all these alternatives and I can tell you, applicant's attorney is an experienced land use attorney. We, you know, our team is an experienced land used attorney. You have professional staff that are sitting here. We looked at it, Christian looked at it very closely. Christian Murdoch, the former planning director, looked at it very closely. If we could have come up with a different way, we would have. This is a long process and the applicant has had to definitely work very diligently to provide the information that's before you tonight to meet the planned development requirements. And I don't think anybody is saying this is a perfect system, but that is what is in the code. Your job as planning commissioners is to look at the code and analyze the project that's before you and to see if you can make the findings that are necessary. If you can't make the findings that are necessary, then, then you make a decision based on your inability to make the findings. But that is the universe within which we have to review project applications. And so for, I think, Madam Chair, if I may, I think staff has a response to the, the suggestion about potential variance or the agricultural. I think the director wants to say something.
I think, let me finish polling the commission and then I would be very happy to hear that.
Great.
Okay.
For rezoning, we're talking, I'm, I'm not convinced.
Okay. So I, did I get your answer?
Not really. I've been sitting on the fence pretty, pretty good, but I've been trying to find another answer to this, but.
Okay. So I think we've polled the commission on kind of where folks stand. What would staff like to add?
I just wanted to clarify that any development within the hillside overlay requires a rezone to the PD. And so I just wanted to just bring, bring that back where it might not, this might not, this is not a typical rezoning, but because it's in the hillside preservation district, the PD allows, I just lost the word. In a, like, in a traditional planned development, right, you are looking at like flexibility, right, you are looking at different design standards, development standards, but that's not what's before the commission tonight. It's really just their ability to legalize the grading. And that's a code requirement that we're not able to just override.
May I?
Please.
So I understand, I understood what you just said, that anything within HPD requires it to be rezoned to PD, but that's not what I read in the ordinance. Public agency and other types of groups, it's, are exempt from it. And also the, what I read about the agricultural is direct from our ordinance, our code of ordinances. So maybe you could shed some light on that for me? I'd appreciate it. If you want, I can tell you what section it is. It's section 9-4 dot 2256. And I want to say it was maybe the third or fourth paragraph down.
And this is not within an agricultural zoning district.
I understand.
So again, we can't apply the exemption because it's not applicable here. So, so we don't, we can't, we don't have the choice to apply that exemption outside of agricultural zoning district.
That wasn't what I was suggesting. What I was suggesting is if we're going to rezone it to PD to meet this requirement of this back, I want to say back-ass words, but I know I shouldn't, but I just did, to accommodate this oddly, I mean, it's like, we have our ankle in the snare of our own loophole, it feels like, and there's, there's, it just seems like there's got to be another way. So my thought was, could we rezone it to, and I, I don't know, I'm new, but could we rezone it to agricultural or to R1A? Because.
I think, I think we can't propose, what the city attorney and staff are saying is we can only consider the application before us. We can't make a proposal for the applicant.
Gotcha.
I think what I was saying on the variance front is, I would be able to make findings for the variance. They're listed in our code. I am having a much harder time making the findings for what staff has put before us. There is nothing in the HPD article that says a variance is not allowed in HPD. There's nothing in the variance section that says that we can't apply it to HPD. The findings are simple. They seem to describe the particulars of this situation. So I think, you know, I don't know how we get to a vote here. I don't know if we're going to be able to find somebody to make a motion and a second to support. I don't know if the city staff would like a motion to deny. I don't know if we have a resolution that has that, right? So we're kind of, we are a recommending body and council will consider this or not, but.
Right, that's correct. So the planning commission will make their recommendation, whatever that's going to be, and it will proceed to the council, and the council will consider the planning commission's recommendation. So if we have a majority of the planning commissioners, and it sounds like we think there are a majority that would have trouble making all of the findings that are required, then we would want to hear from the planning commissioners which findings they do not think that they can make and why they cannot make them. And then staff can draft a resolution of denial. We can do that tonight. We, we, we will hear from the planning commission and then absorb that and reflect that in a resolution of denial. And then that resolution of denial can be considered by the planning commission. And then if the planning commission wants to move that and second it and support it by a majority, then it will proceed to the council.
Okay.
So if we can, I think staff can put up the findings that need to be made and then maybe it'd be good, Chair, it's up to you, of course, but if you want to go through each one and then.
Maybe Commissioner Devine, did you have something?
Yeah, I, I think that would be pertinent because I'm just having a hard time. I totally understand this, this cyclical aspect of this. Nonetheless, we're here because of a violation. So are we going to reward violations? And so that's why I think going through the findings would be helpful because right now, it's really.
it's really hard to separate this from the very simple black and white fact.
Chair, if I may throw something in? I mean, this, I, I think we should absolutely pursue the variance option. This just is a Twilight Zone moment. It really is. I'm waiting, I think Rod Serling should walk into the room any moment. It's just absurd. So this said to investigate the variance and also work towards correcting this. I mean, the two examples that we were given of HPD, the Fassler project and the Talbot project, are Twilight Zone, again, away from what we're talking about here. They're, they're not even in the same league, in, in my opinion, just due to the size and scope of, of what we're looking at. And we know that the, the 801 Fassler project is continuing to have issues to this day, as far as HPD overlay. There were violations of that, apparently, and still going on, and, and items that were not done by the developer. So I am extremely, extremely apprehensive, I think everybody up here is, on this. So we need to pursue all options, and I think the variance is, it sounds feasible and logical to do, and I think that would correct a, a lot of the issues that we're all just, just not on board with.
Well, and, and there's also a precedent setting, right? It's like, if you have a site in HPD and you want to rezone your property, just violate the law.
And that's the Twilight Zone moment. It's, it's just, it, it's absurd. It doesn't make sense. There's no logic in it.
And, and it's hard not, I mean, it, it's impossible to not see that going from R1 to PD, it's a much less restrictive, much more flexible. Yes, there is discretion involved. But yeah, it, it's hard to perceive it as anything other than rewarding, and I love the fact that you can't, the precedent setting, that's huge. And I would also just like to clarify that I understand what we're deliberating on tonight. I had an idea, you had an idea. I understand that we're being told by the land use attorney for the applicant and by our staff and attorney, the option that has been put before us, but I think we're also having a hard time accepting that that really is the only option. And the more I hear about the variance, I, I'm with Commissioner Redfield. I, I would prefer to continue and have that explored rather than do the whole, I mean, I don't think that looking at the findings is a bad thing either. I mean, I would be willing, absolutely willing to do that as well, but.
Well, and I, I appreciate that the applicant has, has said that they want to get this done, and that they seem to have been complying with the agreement. I think that's helpful, right? So I think they probably want to get this done as simply and as quickly as well. So what, what do we do now? Do you want to put the findings on the screen?
I'm sorry, what? I'm sorry. We're, we're, there's a lot of machinations back here.
Sure. Would you like to put the findings on the screen as, as was suggested, or what would you guys like to do?
At your pleasure. So whatever you would like to do, we would be happy to do that. So, one thing we wanted to clarify with the planning commission is that, I mean, we briefly discussed the variance, and, and we identified a few reasons why it wouldn't work. One, and first and foremost, is that the applicant didn't apply for a variance. So we can't just grant variances without that being part of the application process. Secondarily, variances won't apply to changes in land use, and here you have a, we are trying to establish the use through the PD process. That's what's required. So we can't
Which, which use? The, the legal grading?
No, the single-family use. So through the PD process, you are establishing the use, and that's provided in section 9-4.2203. So you have to establish the use before it can be changed.
But why do we have to establish the use?
Because it's in the hillside preservation district, and that is the requirement for hillside projects within the hillside preservation district. So if you go to section Commissioner Davis was just reading it.
Oh, you want it again?
Yes, please.
It is 9-4 dot 2256.
2256.
Sorry, I'm familiar with what the ordinances say. What in the order requires us to establish a land use of a single family? What, what part of the order?
So nothing in the order requires the establishment of the use, but in order to, sorry, wrong use of words.
Yeah.
The only way that the applicant can comply with the order and get the grading permit is to go through this process. They have to, and, and this was discussed at length during the code enforcement process, that they would have to go through this lengthy procedure to get the grading permit, and it requires, you know, the, the creation of the plan development district and a development plan. So again, not, not something that is ideal, not something that I think, I mean, if, if there had been an easier way, we would have tried to take that, but it's just, that's the requirement in the code.
Do you want to say something, Commissioner Davis?
Not yet.
And I mean, I, I think there's been a lot of talk about, like, that this may be, you know, somehow, this is a favorable outcome to the applicant, and I think that if you ask the applicant, they would wholeheartedly say this isn't a process that they wanted to follow. I'm sure they would have been happy to just remove the soil and the sand and be done with it. Going through this process certainly has not been easy or inexpensive for them, and so I, I think that, you know, if, if they could have identified an easier way, I think they would have identified it.
Wouldn't an easier way have just been following the rules?
Well, but their position was that, I mean, I guess, I, I agree with you, but their position was, and, and has been all along, and you heard that from the applicant, that they didn't actually grade, and their position at the hearing was that there was no grading. But of course, as indicated earlier, the hearing officer found in favor of the city.
Well, and, you know, I can't rattle off the definition of grading, and I don't want to get too distracted from my question, because I remembered it again, but it seems to me, so yeah, they were just moving sand, but what I read in the order was it was the amount, and it, they did it with artificial means, and also she said as soon as they moved it outside of the arena. So yeah, they didn't grade, like, dig down a grade, but they built up a grade. They changed the grade outside of the arena. So isn't that grady? And that is what caused runoff, and that's what they had to cover and protect and, right?
Yeah, the city's position was it was grading, and they needed a grading permit, and unfortunately, getting a grading permit is
You can say you, it was just moving sand out of the arena, but where did you move it to? It, it changed the grade of the land. So anyway, having said that, couldn't they file for a variance? You said that we couldn't do the variance because it would require the applicant filing for a variance, and if they really have no interest in this being rezoned PD, and they really want to close it, and they've already done all the mitigation and everything that we've, that we asked to protect the, you know, from flooding and toxic runoff and that, I mean, we saw that in the last hearing. They had done that very well, being MPs. Couldn't they file for a variance?
Yeah, I don't believe this is eligible for a variance, because, again, within the hillside overlay, well, first, well, I guess, yeah, it, it is an order thing. Within the hillside overlay, that grading, so had they come, you know, before the, before this work was done, this is the same process that they would have had to go through because they're in the HPD, and that requires the approval of a development plan, which requires rezoning to PD, and so the project's not eligible for a variance to establish the use and do this work. And, and, I mean, these are
Yeah. I, I hear, I hear what you're saying. I think, you know, the purpose of a variance in Pacifica, and in many cities, is to accommodate for special circumstances, and I would highly suggest, or like, this is highly suggestive of special circumstances. All of the previous projects that were put up on the screen of HPD were single-family home proposals, and they all were new development, and they all had an actual development proposal. None of them had a violation. None of them had a court order. I mean, this is, we've been doing this for a long time. I've never, ever had this come up before us. That in and of itself feels like a peculiar circumstances, right? So, again, we can't ask, we can't force the applicant to file a variance application, but when every single finding on the project is not applicable, not applicable, not applicable, it's not the right set of findings, right? And so that's what I, as a planning commissioner, I'm trying to logic my way into getting there, because I know that staff is in a hard position. Like, this is not what you guys wanted to be doing either. So I think, I think I just, I just can't get there. And it sounds like you have four just can't get there, there's one on the fence and two who are not here. So I think the next question is, like, how do we proceed to council? And maybe it's a recommendation of denial?
Yeah. I do, I, I hear you, and I think that you're correct. I do want to bring up one code section that maybe you haven't reviewed that specifically speaks to grading and excavation permits.
Which, which article is it, Denise?
It's 9-4.2212.
9-4.
One more time, 9-4.
22, 9-4.2212. That, I think, I mean, it, to Chair Hazard's point, I mean, most of this, the findings and the discussion about PD do relate to bigger projects, but based on this code provision, I understand, and I think the intent was, to show that there, it was intended, the PD designation was intended for grading and excavation permits as well. So I wanted to just bring this up and flag it for you to see.
No, I appreciate that, and I do think that a grading, a grading exercise that would be consistent with the intent, or the purposes of Hillside District, that maybe I could look at differently, but the intent of the Hillside Preservation District was not an illegal grading opportunity, right? Like, so they're at odds. And to, I think, City Attorney's point, this is not the route that you guys would have wanted to take either. We have a weird code, right? There's, there's code oddities here. I, I still don't see, I am not an attorney, I still don't see why a variance wouldn't be applicable, because it seems pretty straightforward. The findings seem applicable, but we're not the applicant. So I think we're back to, like, how do we finish reviewing what's before us tonight? Does anyone have any other comments before we talk about Commissioner Godwin?
I need a little more time and do a little more research, so I'm leaning toward continuation is the best possible outcome, because it seems like there's some things that, that couldn't be looked at.
Rather than making a decision
Decision of denial, or, because that seems to be the only other choice.
Yeah. Well, let me ask a question, and I want to make sure that we're being fair to everyone. If we think that there's information that can fill this out, where we could get there, then that makes sense. I personally, and I said this at the last meeting, this just doesn't pass the logic test for me, so I will not be able to get there. If we have, I believe, because it's a rezone, it's four out of seven?
Mm-hmm.
So if the four other people on the dais, or at least three, you know, if we think that we can get there, then let's continue it.
So are you convinced that a variance won't work, or would you be interested in having them explore if there might be a way to have that?
Again, no, 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 I, I hear what you're saying. I think a variance would be something that I personally could support, based on the way our ordinance is written. That is not what's before us tonight.
No.
I understand. But I guess if we can't get there by any other path, which a continuance would be about more information and maybe exploring other options, and if, if none of those are a path that we can get there, then yeah, I'm with you. I mean, we're never going to get there, because I'm not either.
You want a rezone?
I'm with you. Yeah.
So I see what you're saying. I think what I'd like to hear from the city attorney is whether the type of continuance that the commissioners up here are describing is something that we would be, that would be fruitful to staff, because what I'm hearing, like, I'm hearing two different things. I'm hearing that there is not a path to analyze a variance, because that's not the application. So if we continue and ask for an analysis of a variance, that might not be helpful. I mean, I, we need some guidance.
Yeah, I think you're correct, Chair, that there's, if, if there's specific information that the planning commission wants about the project that's before them, we'd be happy to go out and research and come back and provide that to the planning commission, but as the chair mentioned, the variance isn't part of the project application. So, you know, yeah, we could go back and research that and confirm what's being said tonight, or come up with a different answer, but we're, that's still not going to be something that is feasible for the planning commission to approve or recommend.
Do you recommend asking the applicant for their, like, would the applicant like to weigh in? Well, let me, let me ask, let me ask you a question. Would you recommend asking the applicant if they would like to pursue a different alternative, or if they would like us to make a motion from a time standpoint?
Well, I mean, I wouldn't want to recommend that the applicant pursue a variance if staff feels that a variance is not feasible or possible. So.
Okay.
I mean, you, but
I'm certain of that, I guess, is my question.
I think what they're trying to tell us is that they are certain enough for a continuation to not make sense, under the current application.
Yep.
Right? That's what I'm getting. Does anyone disagree?
Repeat, repeat that one more time?
Sure. I think what I'm getting from, from staff and from the city attorney is that based on what is before us, a continuation does not math. They don't support a variance, and I don't, I, I don't see them clearly putting anything, any other options before us to continue and pursue more information on. Correct me if I'm wrong, please.
No, I hear what she's saying, sure. Because, yeah, it's not part of what's already, what's gone before us.
The tail of the dog, so to speak, and the dog's already on the run. So maybe if we denied it, then we'd have to come up with another option.
I don't know. The recommendation goes to council, Commissioner Davis. We are not the decision-making body on this.
Yeah, no, I understand. Then they can do what they see that is, think is appropriate.
So all we're trying to do is clarify why we're denying.
Yeah, findings.
That's how it's seeming. I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but that is what the tea leaves seem to be revealing. Okay. Would staff like us to discuss findings in particular?
Yes, so let me go ahead and pull up the findings for
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. And Commissioner Redfield, I didn't mean to cut you off. Did you want to?
Just a hypothetical. Going back before all this occurred, had this happened before the hearing, and the applicant had asked for a variance, or a pass, if you will, through the process of a variance, would that have been possible and not have gone to a hearing with an NOV? Total hypothetical, just trying to clarify in my brain.
Could I just clarify the, the question, Commissioner Redfield? So if they had come to the city for the permit pathway prior to doing the grading, would they be eligible for a variance? Was that the question?
Not even a, a permit to do it. If it had occurred If it had occurred, and before it went to a hearing, a formal hearing and a formal process, could the applicant have gone and asked the city for a variance and had obviously a public hearing for a variance on that discretion, indiscretion, I should say?
My understanding is no, that we would still be in this current pathway because of the requirements of the Hillside Preservation District.
So, in other words, that would required, would have required a grading permit, no matter what, being in the, the HPD?
Right. So, going to findings, going to findings, I think the one that, and we can talk about all of them, but the one that, on packet page 41, that says the land use is proposed, will not be detrimental to present or potential surrounding uses, which is fine, but will have a beneficial effect, which would not be achieved through other districts. I do not know what the beneficial effect is. So, that, that's like the...
Packet page, please.
Well, it's on the screen, and it's 41.
Oh, it's on the screen.
So, I think you should just, what you, what support you have for that finding?
Yeah, I'm, I'm missing the beneficial effect.
See what they come up with in response.
I mean, the applicant has acknowledged on the record that it's not a benefit to them. The community has acknowledged that it's not a benefit, in their opinion, and I can't find a benefit here, so I don't, I don't, that's one I couldn't support? Any other ones we want to skip through?
I think, in, I believe it's items B, in the development plan, item subcategory B, says each unit of the development, as well as the total development, can exist as an independent development, and the only development we're talking about, I believe, is the single-family residence with the carport. That's the only development is the carport. Capable of creating an environment of sustained desirability and stability or adequate assurance that such objective can be obtained. And it goes on to say, "In the findings, the project does not include any new development or demolition of existing structures. The site is already developed with single-family residents and associated improvements, and the current configuration has demonstrated the ability to function independently and compatibly with the surrounding neighborhood." And I can't make that, just on public comment alone, that, that finding, that is now gated and not accessible like any other neighborhood in the entire Back of the Valley area.
So, I did have...
Please.
I had one that I, at, at, at best, had questions on, and it's on packet page 42. Findings right above parenthetical letter, small case F, above that findings, there's two paragraphs in the second half of the second paragraph. Therefore, staff finds that the area surrounding the existing development site can be planned and zoned in coordination and substantial compatibility with the existing development. And I, I'm kind of like, so what does that really mean? And I kind of go back to some of the public comments about, for now, maybe, but what about future plans? And the new zoning gives the impression that there's more options, flexibility, and certainly the opportunity for a larger development down the road. So, I struggled with that, too. I, it felt like if we say it, it's true, but for me, it's not.
Yeah. Well, and again, most of the findings that we're supposed to make are not applicable, so it's, it's hard to, it's hard to make a lot of, it, it just seems like it's a round peg in a square hole. So, does anyone else have any items?
Are you going to be typing this up? Well, I think they are.
Yeah. So, just to clarify, Chair, so I've heard so far that planning commissioners are having difficulty making the findings in section 9-4.2206B and C. I think that's, what was the third? E, B, C, and E. So, so what we would ask the planning commissioners do is, if there's a majority that supports those subsections, and there may be more, I didn't mean to cut you off, but as there are, if there's a majority of support for those subsections, then explain why you think that finding cannot be made. And then staff will write it down, and then we're going to hopefully be able to share that resolution with you so that you can all see, and then you would be voting on that at the end of the deliberations.
Denise, so you want us to, you want us to basically support next steps with specific findings that we cannot substantiate?
Right, so it sounds like that's where the planning commission is going, so now we're just going through the findings to see which ones the planning commission will have, planning commissioners will have difficulty supporting. And so, I've heard it's B, C, and E as findings that may be difficult for planning commissioners to support. So, those would be the base, could be the basis for a denial, and so we would want to hear from planning commissioners about why, if a majority of you all agree that those cannot be made, the reasons why they cannot be made.
So, can we have those up on the screen while we're doing that, please?
And so, I think this is a live, I think staff is working in the document right now, and you can see the, the findings that have been posted up there. I can't see that, it's too far for me, but some other people might be able to see.
I mean, I think, this, I don't want to go down the, the rabbit's hole of opening something that has confused me for years and years, but the specific plan portion of HPD is very, very confusing. So, I don't want to say that I'm limiting it to these because I, I never quite get to the specific plan being consistent because it's so weird. So, I don't know, like, I'm gonna, I don't want to make a motion that necessarily talks about that, but I also don't want the assumption to be that because we didn't bring it up, we concur with the finding.
Right, understood. So, one option for Chair Hauser, if you get a majority to support you on this, would be to, you know, with whatever recommendation you make to the council, provide an explanation of that, that the planning commission had difficulties just reconciling this project with the plan development process.
Yeah. I think that would be great. And then, while we're talking about this, how do we, at some point, create an agenda that looks at the HPD process in general? Because this has come up, like, again and again and again, and it never gets easier, and it's not great for staff, and it's not great for council, and it's not great for us. Like, what's, what do you recommend on that front?
Well, certainly, the, the planning staff could schedule an agenda item to just discuss the HPD requirements, but there, there are limitations to what the city can do to change the HPD requirements without approval of the voters. So, there are limitations.
Okay.
But, but that would be, you know, just a way to at least have a discussion about that at a future date.
Okay. I do believe, too, it is in the housing element to look at HPD and the PD process. I don't know where that will fall in the work plans.
Yeah.
Because as Assistant City Attorney Bizano said, changes would likely require a vote of the people.
Yeah.
But it, it is noted in there. Okay. I, I really appreciate that clarification.
And I understand what everybody was saying, but it, would it, if we were doing some kind of change in language to eliminate, like, what Sam said, that, or Commissioner Hauser, sorry, that there, you know, there's this loophole. And, I mean, effectively, as she said, you, oh, I want to be PD, I'm just going to grade without a permit. So, there's a, there's a flaw here, right? And I wonder if correcting a flaw would still, it's just, it's kind of rhetorical. I know we're going to talk about it at another time, but I wanted to throw that out there.
Okay. Well, if we could scroll up a little bit, we'll start at the top. God, I didn't have a problem with one. Does anyone have a problem with one? That was the only one that seemed to make sense to me.
No.
So, yeah, so...
We can take out the findings that are, all we're really looking for are the findings that the planning commission cannot make.
Okay. Commissioner Redfield, I believe two came from you. Do you want to speak on that, and then folks can add?
Yeah, two, it, it just seems so, I can't even think of the word, not real, if you will. It's, the development we're talking about is a carport. That is the development. You know, it speaks to this as it's a development, like, we're putting in, you know, homes or townhouses or whatever, apartments, whatever it can be, can exist independently, and just the wording is so disingenuous, in my opinion. It doesn't meet the standard that it's, it's not real to me. Sustained desirability and stability or adequate assurance that such objective can be obtained. It's, it's just not, it's disingenuous, the way it's worded, and it's misleading as development, in my opinion.
And to that, I would add, each unit of the development, well, isn't the grading a unit of the development? That's why we're here. And I'm with you. It, it's, it's these obscure bits that don't constitute a development.
Anyone have something to add? I, I agree with my co-commissioners, this idea of sustained desirability and stability or adequate assurance, no.
Yeah.
It's a hard no.
Yeah, and I, I think, you know, it's desirable that we have the applicant fix the correction, but it's not sustained desirability or stability. It's a transient fix.
Yes, it's transient.
Um, okay. When staff is ready, we'll move to the next one, but since you guys are typing, I'm going to defer to you. Three, does anyone want to start?
So, I'm struggling with will not be detrimental to the present or potential surrounding uses, but will have a beneficial effect, which would not be achieved through other districts. We've already talked about another district, and I understand that the agreement is for PD, so we can't look at it. But also, from what we've heard from the public, there's already been detrimental. I mean, Lisa Funkhauser, or Funkhaus, sorry, Lisa, described detrimental effects to her property as a result of the grading. Yeah. I don't, I'm going to turn over to Mr. Redfield.
Mr. Redfield.
Commissioner Redfield? The land uses would not be detrimental. That's a clear, to me, that should be followed up with clear and present danger in that, in that statement. Because it has shown, just the grading alone, has, has altered the land, it's altered the drainage, and it is, is proposed in the, what we have before us, that it is not to be put back where it came from. So, it has clearly altered the land. It is considered hazardous material, according to, I believe, the chemical report came in with, God, I think it was 10, 12 barium, arsenic, chromium, lead, zinc, et cetera, et cetera, in the soil samples. And clearly, the runoff issue, whether it has BMPs or not, whether they're monitored, and rainfall, that is the beginning of the, of the watershed, essentially, for the valley. So, yeah, I, I can't make any, you know, anything that's beneficial back there at all. It doesn't, it doesn't jive.
So, Madam Chair, if I may?
Okay.
I just want to clarify that the land uses that are being proposed here are single-family use. That's what, that's what the land use that is being proposed is, which is consistent with the surrounding area and the existing use on the property.
Can you clarify if, as you reset that, but will have a beneficial effect, which would not be achieved through other districts? So, let me, if, if you wouldn't mind? Please. So, most cities tend to avoid PD zoning districts because it is a peculiar, right? Like, base zoning districts are preferred. There's consistency, it's reliable, everybody gets the same thing. And so, rezoning to a PD, it's kind of a privilege to get a PD designation, right? And it's a privilege that's considered when other base zoning districts don't make sense. And so, I, I, it's hard, as the other commissioners are saying, I don't understand how a PD rezon is creating a beneficial effect that wouldn't be achieved through other districts. If we are going to rezon, a base district seems to be the most beneficial. I hear, I hear what we're saying about our ordinance. I just can't get there, and I'm not reading the ordinance the same way. Does anyone else want to comment? Commissioner Godwin?
Yeah, if we're talking about one house, and it's already in an R1 district, how is changing the zone... how is changing the zoning allow people anything other than what they could get in an R1 district, especially if it has a carport? So the, the car storage is, is now consistent. And, you know, I don't think we're getting any, anywhere with changing to a PD for a single house on a 20-acre site.
Yeah, I mean, so the only, the, relevant to this case, what you're, what they could do if they get it re-designated to PD is they could gra, remove the grading, right? They could remove the soil. So that's one benefit that they can't get through other districts. And that's why they're seeking to be designated in PD is to correct the grading issues.
I, I hear you, but I do think that, I'm going to restate like, being in a PD district is kind of a privilege. And we set a really dangerous precedent, when the only way to get out of an illegal grading, right? Like, I don't want to keep beating the drum, but like, this, this is not, this finding, when it was created by the folks who put this into place, this was not what they envisioned. And intent is a really important part of our law, so.
And I can't disagree, I mean, I can't disagree with you. I don't know what the.
Yeah, I hear you, I hear you.
I just want to add this too. Like, I totally, I get it. It's black and white. I understand the applicant's position. I understand your position. But the elephant in the room is that the applicant cannot be trusted. And that's what public comment is screaming at us. So when you say PD is considered someone of a privileged designation, we kind of are like skirting around the elephant in the room that is not a part of this in any way, shape, or form. It's not before us, but it's what the public has experienced in this neighborhood.
I, I.
So it's hard to get there.
I do hear you, but I think that we have to be very impartial and, and reserve our feedback to what's before us. And the facts don't comport for me. So no matter who the applicant is, I could not get here on this finding.
Agreed. And I, yeah, there's an undertone here, though, that is prevalent through the 50-plus public comments we've received. That's, I just want to make mention of that.
Sheriff. Is there another finding after this? Or does anyone else have anything? Commissioner Redfield?
I'd like to make a comment to kind of follow up on Commissioner Devine's. And just that I am shocked at the, the failure of the owners to understand the entitlements. This is not their first rodeo, clearly. This is not the first project or property that they purchased. So my apprehension, you know, it's either like they had no idea or no clue, or they had other intentions. And that, that kind of goes with, you know, the whole, the whole thing. It's like they're, it's so far, it's not, it's not gone well in the neighborhood from the get-go.
So we have to reword these to substantiate why we do not support them.
Well, I think, I think that staff can put that together, so.
Maybe we should let them then. And we should just push this, push this to council.
Yeah.
And let them get there.
Yeah. And, and if I, if I may, we do need to know why you can't make them. So we will take the, the comments that you're providing and put them into sentences.
Yeah.
And bring them back. But we do need to know which findings you can't make and why you can't make them.
Yes. So I think the two that we've gone through so far, and is there one more after this?
Sorry, I, I just have a quick point of order. We don't bring it back. I'm so sorry. We will, we will take your comments and put them into words.
Bless you.
Well, that, that, that was the, the hope. If, if Planning Commission feels more comfortable having it returned to you, certainly, we can return it to you, and you can review it and then approve it at a future meeting. But the idea was, if we could get a consensus one way or the other tonight, we would have you make that determination. And we're hoping that this will help you feel comfortable enough to.
I, for one, would say that it's nine o'clock, and we have plenty of time to get through it tonight if, if staff has the, has the ability to go through what they would like to. So then let's keep tracking. Um, five, the areas trying to develop. Commissioner Davis, I think this one was the one you brought up. Or maybe this was Commissioner Redfield. I can't remember. Whoever's, whoever's finding this was should take a start.
So this one might have been mine, but I do have, one of the things I have a hard time with on this one, that the PD district uses proposed were in conformance with the general plan. And, well, it's not applicable for the local. And the general plan is currently open space agricultural residential. So I had that question even as I was reviewing the packet. And I actually went back to look to see if there was a general plan amendment, because I didn't find that for myself, that, that it's in conformance with what I understood the general plan land used to be. And I think one of the things everyone is struggling with here, and I understand the frustration on all sides, is that we keep referring to this development, when really it's grading a carport and stating that it's a residential use, when it's always been a residential use. There's been people living up there in that residence for years. And then the other side of that coin is the lack of trust that the applicant understands and/or intends to kind of follow the rules. And I'm making no judgment here. This is an observation. And so I think that it's, we're all having a hard time reconciling that. And it's very confusing. I kept reading development plan, plan development, strategic plan. And I see these terms and the names and the numbers. It's obviously an official document, but I can't even see it. It's all just kind of ethereal. And I think that's one of the things that I know, I, I feel like Commissioner Redfield and I are struggling with. It's, it just feels obscure and ambiguous.
All right. Does anyone have any other comments on five? Okay. If we could keep going down. I mean, for me, on the last one, and maybe I should have said this. For me, the issue about consistency with the general plan is less because in my mind, and maybe I'm incorrect, a PD is designed to kind of be flexible in the general plan. I think for me, on the last one, it's the compatibility with surrounding uses. So I don't have any issues with six personally. But if other commissioners do, they should say that.
Well, and I think part of where I struggle with that one is that the land use for the general plan is OSAR, and PD is more flexible. We've talked about all that. And what I read in the ordinance is that if it gets zoned PD, then we'll make amendments to the general plan. And yet here, we're saying that it's consistent as though that's what the expectation is. Does that make any sense at all?
Could I clarify, Commissioner Davis? So there are no proposed amendments to the general plan. The, so a PD establishes what the specific allowed uses are. And so in this case, with the residential use, that's consistent with the existing general plan designation that already allows residential use. You know, public, there had been public comments raising concern about future development on the site. And I believe what you're referencing is just an explanation that, you know, should, should an owner in the future want to make changes to their development plan, to the PD, then those are the things that we would be looking at, right? We'd be looking at amendments to the development plan, potentially amendments to the general plan. But that's not required here because it's consistent. The residential use is consistent.
With OSAR?
With the OSAR, correct.
Yeah, I was more focused on the PD designation, so thank you for steering me back on track.
Can we drop down? So I, again, I feel like most of these other ones didn't apply. If you keep going down to the be it further resolved, this, again, this is some, I, I don't know what to say. I cannot make or not make these findings because I'm confused by them. So I'll just note those. And I don't know if anybody has anything else to say on that point. I don't think that's fair necessarily, but.
All right, you're asking about the, the specific plan findings?
Yes, do we have a specific plan?
Right. And so if you're not able to make findings to approve the development plan, then I think it follows.
Right.
That you can't make the findings for the specific plan.
Right. But is, so I guess, I guess my question, this is, I've had this question several other times, and I've never quite gotten an answer that makes sense to me. A specific plan is usually a document. Do we have a document here that's a specific plan?
No.
Right.
Other than the uses, right? Yeah, so no.
So this, and that's, if we were able to get here, which we can't, to your point, I would have a hard time doing this because I don't think what, I, I don't see a specific plan, right? So that's, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I don't think it's necessary because I don't think that's where we're going.
So is it accurate to say that because you can't make the findings for approval of a development plan, you can't make the finding of consistency? Is that an accurate way to capture what you've said?
That is, that is accurate. I also would prefer that if we are going to do rezones to PD that require a specific plan, that the specific plan, even if it's a one-page document with the uses, that there be an actual document. I don't think that would be out of line with our ordinance.
And I'm going to chime in here because I, I had the same confusion. And in fact, in my notes, I said, at the risk of sounding ignorant, and it makes me feel so much better, you're confused too. There were three documents that were mentioned throughout, and it was the application, DPE 87-22, and SP 180-22. And yet, there was no document for me to look at. And I could not reconcile that in my head. I'm like, it's got to be a document. But I am absolutely with you. Another time, I think we, we need critical and pertinent documents to the decision we're trying to make, if that's allowed. So that's the second, second vote for specific plans to be included. Thank you.
City Attorney Bazano?
If I may?
Yes.
Yeah, so I, I hear what you're saying, both of you. And yes, typically, specific plans are a, a specific document or subset of like a general plan. But in Pacifica's code, section 9-4.2208, a specific plan is really a lot of different documents. It doesn't say you have to have one document. There's lots of different requirements for submission. And that's what's necessary for the specific plan in Pacifica. And, you know, in this case, the applicant did submit what was applicable and required. But if, so to Chair Updegreaves, or Director, sorry.
To Samantha.
Director Updegreaves comments earlier, if the Planning Commission, you know, can't make that finding because it can't make the finding of the plan development, then we can just specify that.
Yeah. Well, and I, I think, I think part of the, it makes sense if a specific plan is done subsequently to the PD rezone, but prior to the building permit, the way our ordinance is written. But because it feel like we're doing everything at the same time, it, it doesn't really feel like it's fulfilling what the ordinance is requiring, right? So that's, that's the issue that I have with it. And, and this is not peculiar to this PD rezone, right? Anytime we've done these in parallel, I've had the same comment. So, okay. So would staff recommend that we take a recess to give you guys a minute to do the, okay.
That's a good idea.
10-minute, 5-minute, 30-minute? You tell us what you need.
I, I think 10 minutes. Do you think 10? 10 minutes would be good. Thank you.
It is 9:13.
Is that the right word? We're gonna keep going. Perfect. And I'll turn it to staff to tell us what we should be doing.
Thank you, Chair Hauser. We're pulling the resolution back up. The first part of the resolution, the "whereas's" are all the same as the resolution for approval in the packet until you get down to this highlighted one. So this is where, so this is new from what you reviewed. So whereas the recommendation of denial of the rezoning and disapproval of the development plan and disapproval of the specific plan negates the need for any review under SEQA, a SEQA does not apply to projects which public agency rejects or disapproves. So is the commission okay with that change?
Can we go to the top really quickly?
Yes. So, thank you. That is the very first change.
Yeah. I think, I just wanted to make sure if we're gonna decide if the recitals are true, that we have an opportunity to relook at the...
Would you like me to read, to read it?
Sure.
Are you good?
I'm personally good. Do we think that we need to read it for the record? City attorney's shaking her head. I think we can keep going down.
Okay. Go back up just one. Okay, oh, no. To the further resolve. So, so be it further resolved, the planning commission recommends that city council deny the approvals and then into the findings that the commission said they couldn't make. So the first one was that each unit of the development, as well as the total development, can exist as an independent development capable of creating an environment of sustained desirability and stability or adequate assurances that such objective will be obtained. And the finding that we heard is that the proposed project does not create an environment of sustained desirability and stability and does not provide adequate assurance that objectives for development would be attained.
If it would be amenable to staff and the rest of the commission, I would add a sentence here that the benefit of the corrective action is not a sustained, a sustained outcome. Does that make sense? I see one head nod.
The benefit.
Apathetic.
Can you repeat that, Chair?
The benefit of the corrective grading action does not equate to a sustained...
Grading action.
Yeah.
It's sorry, it's hard to...
No, 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 sorry. And I'm not talking directly into the microphone. Does not equate to a sustained outcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The second is, the land use, land uses proposed will not be detrimental to the present or potential surrounding uses, but will have a beneficial effect which would not be achieved through other districts. The grading has had detrimental effects to the surrounding areas and has altered the land and altered the drainage on the property and has created potential hazardous effects.
So could I ask for clarification? It says the grading has had detrimental effect to surrounding uses, but when you read it, you said, "I heard areas." So which do we want it to be?
I think uses was the intention that staff had, and that's what I'm analyzing.
If it's contaminated, shouldn't we also say residents or future residents as well as surrounding uses?
I don't know if we have analyzed enough to my own personal satisfaction, the claim that it's contaminated, and I don't think that that's related to the findings. It would be related to SEQA, which wouldn't apply. Is that fair? I see head shakes. Sorry, is that okay? Commissioner Godwin?
It's fine. Thought it was in the chemical report.
I mean, so I think what Chair Hauser is saying is that there were public commenters who claimed that it was contaminated, but I don't think, I think she's saying she hasn't seen evidence of that. And I don't know if our engineering team can speak to that or our consultants can speak to that, but what she, I think what Chair Hauser is saying is that hasn't been established for her purposes.
So I think what we were saying, though, was there was a soil analysis, right? But maybe that it wasn't concluded in that analysis that it was contaminated.
If there were not recs or other conclusions that stated definitively that it was not suitable for residential use, then I do not think that that would be a helpful thing to add to this document. I do think that we should add some sort of affirmative statement. So I agree with what's written here, but I think we should affirmatively say that we did not conclude that a rezon would have a beneficial effect that would be more beneficial than other districts.
So the sentence would be, the rezoning to PD would not have a beneficial effect which would not be achieved through other districts.
Yes.
And then we weren't entirely clear from our notes, so this we'd just like a little more information. So the finding is that the area surrounding the development can be planned and zoned in coordination and substantial compatibility with the proposed development and the PD district uses proposed are in conformance with the general plan and where applicable, the local coastal plan, or that changes in the general plan or local coastal plan are justified. So what we heard was that the proposed uses do not align with the intent of the PD district in section PMC 9-4.2202.
I think, I think what was said was that we can, and I would ask everybody to weigh in because this did not come from me, but the, it sounds like we cannot make an affirmative statement that there's substantial compatibility with the surrounding area, especially because we're talking about grading, which is intimately related to stormwater and the stormwater condition has been noted as less than. Commissioner Davis, did I accurately capture? Okay, I see a head nod.
So the proposed use does not align with the intent of the PD district in PMC section 9-4-2202 because the project is not compatible with surrounding uses? I feel like I missed a word, Chair Hauser.
It's substantially compatible, I think, is what she said.
Okay.
Well, the, the finding requires a substantial compatibility finding.
Thank you. And then pertaining to the specific plan, that the specific plan is consistent with the approved development plan, because the findings for the development plan cannot be made, the specific plan cannot be approved, and this finding cannot be made.
Yeah. Would you mind going up to the yellow one more time? I would just change this, if you don't mind, to say the proposed development does not align. I think that's more accurate to what Commissioner Davis was saying. Is that? Yes, I see a head nod, okay. And I was okay with the specific plan, one, thank you for tailoring that.
And then the, the final is now therefore be it resolved that the planning commission of the City of Pacifica hereby recommends that the city council deny enactment of an ordinance rezoning and recommending disapproval of the development plan and recommending disapproval of the specific plan to deny reclassification of the existing hillside preservation district overlay to permit land disturbances consistent with PMC section 9-4.2256.
Does anyone have any questions or comments? All right, then shall we call for our vote? All right. Would someone like to make a motion on this denial? And I would ask that the city attorney advise to do it correctly.
Yes, so the motion should, should specify that you are moving to approve the resolution of denial as prepared by staff and reviewed by the planning commission here tonight and on the screen before you. And making the findings therein.
I think if someone says, "So moved," that covers it.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Godwin. And a yes vote is a yes on a denial.
I'm sorry?
A yes vote is a yes for denial.
Right, since the motion is to, to recommend denial, a yes vote would be a denial.
All right, please vote.
Motion made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Redfield. Vote is unanimous, yes, to deny the resolution, or project.
Adopt the resolution.
To, to adopt the resolution recommending denial.
All right. That takes care of continued public hearings. Moving on to commission communications. Moving on to say it up for later. Glad you're on. Okay. Commissioner Devine.
Can I just ask a quick question? I want to confirm that the council meeting for liaison, is that December 6th or the first?
December 8th.
Or the 8th? Okay, thank you.
And, and council meetings now start at 6:00 PM?
Thank you.
I don't think we'll go on at 6:00 PM, but...
I do have a quick question.
Yes.
So, being the newbie, I swear, I'm not gonna keep using that because it's been almost, well, it has been six months, but I do have some procedural and administrative type questions, and I'm just, I don't want to ask them now, but can I do that during commission, commissioner communications at another meeting, or?
I believe you can, and city attorney Bazana will advise us if, if it's out of order.
Oh.
Would you like to do that now?
No, 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 I'm seeing it for another meeting, but you know what? I thought about running it by Denise before. Let me, let me talk, yeah.
We can talk offline.
I can talk off, I can talk to you one-on-one, yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would like to, sorry, go ahead. Go ahead, go ahead, finish.
No, no, I'm finished. I'll talk to her offline first.
I'd like to piggyback on Commissioner Devine's question. Is the item that we just took action on going to council on December 8th, and does that need a liaison as well?
That's a great question, Chair Hauser. It's currently not on the agenda for December 8th.
Okay.
And so that, we need to plan that through the, the city manager.
Sure.
It will, I, I'm, 570 Crespi is going on December 8th. I feel fairly confident saying that this project will not go on December 8th as well.
For avoidance of doubt, under my purbius chair, I would ask that if it does for some reason go on the 8th, that Commissioner Devine be allowed to liaise.
Thanks, Sam.
Otherwise, we won't have one.
Okay.
Except, though, that, so it wasn't agendaized to designate a liaison.
Christian out of them.
I can support...
I just want to make sure we have, okay, like, if, if we have an earlier hearing, so let me, let me back up. Do we have an earlier hearing than December 8th? Will we have the first meeting in December, or is that gonna be canceled?
I do believe we will have both meetings in December.
Then I will reserve until then.
But we, but we will definitely be back at planning commission.
That's, that's great. We just, unfortunately, have had items where things have moved around.
Yes.
And then councils, like, where's the liaison? So, okay. Let's move it on to staff communications.
Staff have no communications this evening. Well, beyond, I believe we are going to have both meetings in December, and appreciate the commissioners who've shared their planned absences. So we, as we move forward with those meetings, just because the holidays can get scheduled out, we will be polling to make sure that we have a quorum before publishing the agenda. So please look for those emails or calls.
All right. Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? Stay here all night with you guys.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Ouch.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, let's vote.
Motion made by Commissioner Davis, seconded by Commissioner Devine. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.